Commissioner, what page are you referring to?
It's page 31.
Greg, isn't that percent of budget not necessarily their collection rate to the levy tax?
Yeah, that's right. So I believe what the answer there is, is that they, their basis for budgeting might have been slightly different than the basis for budgeting for general fund property tax collections.
Okay, and 911 then?
And 911. They might all be, they might all be a little bit different because they budgeted, it's a little bit different assumption perhaps in their budgeting. All right, on page 35, let's see here. One thing I want to mention is, this is Public Health on 274. We will be processing all of the costs and revenue associated with the Vaccine Center operations through this fund. So in the near future here, probably in the next month, definitely in the next monthly report, we will start to see the expense lines grow and the revenue lines grow eventually as we receive reimbursement. But we're keeping all of that, all that fiscal activity all in this one fund here. So we'll look for a change in that as soon as next month. All right, let's go to page 39, which is the Road CIP. And I just wanted to mention to you here, if you look down at the bottom, the projected ending fund balance of $20.4 million. So last month, that was $15.8 million, so pretty significant change month over month. But the reason why is, is in this note here, you'll see, Note C, $5 million contribution to the Terrebonne Refinement Plan is being pushed to FY '22. So all of a sudden, they're no longer projecting that $5 million, which was in this number here now isn't, and produces this variance out here. So the funding will carry over to next fiscal year, and so will the expenditure. So we'll look for that next year. Just want to highlight that. And then let's go to page 42. And this is the Fair and Expo Fund. So some good news for Fund 615. And I'm going to point your attention down here to the transfers. So part of what I showed you earlier on the TRT side flows through to the Fair Fund. And the way it impacts it here is this number, this transfer in room tax of $813,000. Last month was about $500,000, it was just under $500,000. And so based on the new projections, we're increasing this projection by about $300,000. So this does two things. Is, one, in the budget, this line item right here that has $25,744, that's the line that Budget Committee and the Board approved up to an additional $250,000 in unallocated room tax to subsidize the Fair through the impact of COVID. But we will no longer need that now. So this, we won't see that here because the Fair is essentially, the Fair and Expo is essentially receiving those funds as they would have based on the percentage allocations from TRT. So that's good news. The other good news, and this is tied into not only these transfers, but the other revenue, the revenue items that Jeff and his folks at the Fair have been working on, Fairgrounds, and cost-cutting reductions, is at the very bottom, it will drive the ending fund balance, which we were concerned about significantly over the course of the year, it'll drive that down to above zero. And right now, the projection is about $283,000 in positive fund balance. This does not have any projections in it for the rent that we expect to receive basically from FEMA for the use of the facility as a vaccine distribution center. That will again have positive impacts on the financials. I believe that may be, oh no, one more change, one more thing to note, and it's on page 48. And that is our Risk Management Fund. And I just wanted to let you know that the projected ending fund balance here is of $8.6 million, is about $250,000 more than it was last month. And that's essentially due to, as the year goes by, we reassess where we think our expenses are going to be and our revenue. And one big change here is this general liability cost, this projection of $900,000 was reduced from $1.2 million. So that savings essentially goes down to the ending fund balance. And I do have one more note. So Health Benefits Fund, which is on the next page, that's Fund 675 on page 49. Again, we continue to project our expenses month by month, and the primary driver in this fund is this Health Benefits line. So the projection for expenses of $19.4 million is up about $600,000 from last month at $19.4 million. So it's up from last month, but we're still about $1.5 million under budget. And what that means down here, when you project the ending fund balance of about $15 million, that last month was about $15.6 million. So 14 point, or 15 million versus 15.6, and you can compare that to where we thought we'd be budget-wise of 13.6. So trending in the right direction, but a slight dip in additional projected expenses for that for the month. I believe that's all I have. Are there any questions about fiscal report, or finance, or budget, or anything like that?
I'll just acknowledge, it's exciting to have the health benefits dialed in so well. It's a, you know, kind of a cost-contained and, you know, kind of, the resources are there, we're able to use them as we need them, and it's a stable fund.
I'll just comment, oh, that resource revenue for solid waste is at 70%. The year-to-date is 66.7%. So they're still ahead of year-to-date. And it's the busy time of year now.
Time for spring cleanup. Anything else?
That's it for me. I'll sign off if you have any other questions.
Nope, looks like we're good. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Greg.
Right, you bet. Have a good day.
Item number six, DLCD Technical Assistant Grant Progress Report. Hello, Tanya.
Hello, Commissioners. Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good, wonderful. For the record, Tanya Salzman, Senior Long Range Planner. I'm here for two items today, but the first one is for an update on the DLCD Technical Assistance Grant Progress Report, just checking in with the Board. As the Board knows, we've been awarded a while ago a Technical Assistance Grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development for essentially two projects. The first is Wildfire, which has been going on a separate track with our Associate Planner Kyle Collins. And I'm here today to talk about the latest in the wildlife inventory update. I believe the last time I checked in with the Board, we were in progress with the Interagency Working Group, and we've kind of hit another milestone. So I'm here to just give you a brief update on that and then give you a little bit of a preview, or a, yes, a preview for our upcoming public outreach, which we're really excited about and we're preparing for as we speak. So the general task of the Wildlife Inventory Update is to begin the task, which is a very long task, of potentially updating our GO5 Wildlife Inventories for three inventories. And that's kind of the scope of the grant, just three. And the Technical Advisory Committee, and this I reviewed with the Board in previous meetings, so I'll just go over this part fairly quickly. The Technical Advisory Committee with input from the ODFNW and the county, as well as our consultant, Mason Bruce and Gerard, they honed in on three, three different inventories to update. The Mule Deer Winter Range, Elk Winter Range, and Sensitive Bird Habitat, and that includes Bald and Golden Eagles. These are all pretty much about 30 years old in its current form, and we're aware that there's plenty more besides these three, but the limitations of this grant are such that we had to put a cap on it at some point. So the consultant with their Interagency Working Group with Fish and Wildlife and Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, they looked at their data together, looked at the methodologies of how they collected this data. You know, these guys are the technical experts. These are, this is what they do. So they discussed, you know, is it deer collar data? Is it GPS tags? I don't even know how they do it, but they do it. And they discussed it and made sure that all of this data made sense, all of it was collected in a meaningful way that they all agree upon. And what they came up with was a report that I've included as an attachment to this memorandum, just summarizing where they've observed these new habitats. And obviously, in 30 years, you can imagine that it's changed a lot for numerous reasons. And, you know, the purpose of this meeting today is not necessarily to go into the details of what was in the report. I'll let the Board kind of peruse that over time. But just to tell you that our next steps in the project are to take this information to the public. And our plan is to do two virtual open houses on April 15th and April 29th. This will be very similar in format to what we did for Wildfire. They will be on Zoom and probably some combination of Facebook Live and other platforms so that people can participate in numerous ways. We will have the consultant there, Wendy Wentie, who's our Wildlife Biologist from Mason Bruce and Gerard. She will do the bulk of kind of the explaining of the actual technical aspects of the data collection, what it actually means, perhaps a little bit about, you know, why the deer are over here now, I suppose to over here, et cetera. Obviously, I'm making that very simple. And we'll also have members of the expert technical team from ODFNW to support Wendy and to answer any questions. And we'll explain kind of the whole structure of the project and what it means, what it could mean. The consultants will talk about their methodologies, and we will show some maps. And then mostly, the kind of purpose is to take the temperature from the public. What does the public want to see? What are their concerns? Do they support potentially going forward with this Wildlife Inventory Update? What is a Wildlife Inventory Update? So this will be, we'll have a survey embedded in a website, just like we did for Wildfire. It'll probably be a bit simpler because there's, you know, with Wildfire, we had defensible space and R-327, very specific avenues, whereas this is a little bit more general at this time. It's kind of more just gauging general support for moving forward. And we'll have, you know, in addition to the opportunity for the public to weigh in at these two meetings, we'll also have this survey open online to the public for probably about a month, a little bit before and a little bit after those two meetings. We'll collect that information. If people think, you know, yes, this is a fantastic idea, we think the Board should go ahead with it, or no, we, what about, we have concerns about this or this, we're going to collect that data. And then ultimately, fold it all into one report and bring it back to the Commissioners with the data from the consultant and just a general outline of potential next steps. What actually does a GO5 Wildlife Inventory Update entail? And as the Board knows, we're hopefully embarking on a comprehensive plan update in the very near future. And our, you know, our vision is if the Board decides to pursue this, this is folded into that. This is one facet of the comprehensive plan update that we weigh against, you know, other things that are part of the comprehensive plan, whether that's housing, or wildfire, or all of the above. So this is just a very preliminary step on figuring out what the general idea is about going forward. We're not yet proposing specific amendments, or maps, or any kind of regulatory or non-regulatory options. It's just a general, more conceptual phase of this project. And then we'll, you know, as time goes on, if the Board chooses to pursue this, that's when we would get into a lot more of the details in terms of, like, drilling down into potential geographies. I will say that, you know, just because the data shows a certain polygon of habitat that doesn't necessarily translate exactly into a zoning overlay that will be exactly that thing. You know, there's definitely some changes and some massaging and, you know, it's not exactly as-is right now. So in other words, this is the very first step. So, and that's our general plan. The terms of the grant itself, which is just intended for this first data collection step, the terms of the grant end at the end of May, so we'll be wrapping up this first phase then. But after that is what comes, you know, that's when the Board's decision-making process will determine if we're going to move forward with any sort of future updates and exactly how we would do that. So that's our general update. I'm happy to answer questions about our plans for the public outreach. I will say that those of you who are familiar with our Wildfire outreach, we did what's called a Story Map, which is kind of a fancy website, and we're working on one of those now. Our intention is to have a bunch of the map data in greater detail than what was provided, you know, just as those appendices in the report. I know there's been some concerns from the public that those maps as-is, you know, it's pretty general, it's zoomed pretty far back. But in the public outreach, we have some pretty fun map tools where you're going to be able to click through some layers, look at old versus new data, zoom in, do things like that so you can get a little bit more of a picture of what the scientists found beyond just the, what's provided in the appendices today. And we're looking forward to it. It's some really interesting technology combined with hearing from the public. It's a great synergy, so we're looking forward to that. And we'd love to have you attend or ask any questions.
Great, thank you.
I have a question, you know, on the Bald and the Golden. I used to have a red-tailed nest by my house, and they did not use that nest every year. It was very interesting. And then they'd come back. And I'm just wondering, do these, do the Bald and Golden use the same nest every year? Do you know?
I cannot answer that unfortunately, but that is definitely a question that we can ask our Wildlife Biologists. That's exactly the kind of thing that we want to hear about. Yeah, that's...
I mean, it was very fascinating because they were so magnificent, and you would just want them to be there. It was like 150 feet up in a tree, and it was just beautiful. But, and then my other, this last, well, winter that we really haven't had this low, but it's great to see that there's like 100 inches at Hoodoo and 110 inches of snow at Mount Bachelor. But normally, we see the elk herd like on Goodrich, and I have not seen the elk this winter. Normally, we see like 140 elk. So I'm just thinking, maybe it's because the snow really hasn't come down that far. So it'll be nice to talk to an expert and see, why didn't I, why did they not come down, you know, that low?
Yeah, yeah, that is interesting. I mean, these are the kind of things that I wish I knew, to be honest. But that is, this is exactly the kind of questions that we want to have the consultant and the team answer. So I'll make a note of those. Thanks.
Well, thank you.
When I was reading through the report, I was concerned, or I was a little bit puzzled and a little concerned that the mule deer migration corridors was sort of identified as, this is important, but we, you know, we don't have the resources to complete this right now. And I don't know if there are ways, you know, talking to ODFNW or, you know, kind of wildlife stakeholders in the region to get a feel for, you know, what areas would, you know, can we get at least a little bit of a sense of what areas would have popped out? If we did do a look at wildlife migration corridors and if some of those areas are, you know, really important from a land use planning perspective to look at, whether there's some way we can kind of shoehorn a little bit of that information in at least on the, you know, on the back of the mule deer winter range or something like that?
That's a good question, and I know that that did come up when they had to select three. I know it's, it was hard for them to select only three. I think, you know, I cannot speak for the biologists, but I do think that they believe that, you know, given the kind of scale of the change of the three that they chose, this was the best bang for the buck essentially. I know that's a terrible phrase to use. But I think that, you know, they, you know, and their experience is also with, you know, how has this been impacted by, or how has this intersected with development? Because often, these are the people who are called upon when there are development proposals to say, you know, hey, do you see a conflict? So this was what they deemed most important. And we can certainly ask them about the migration corridors in the open houses. I don't know if they can actually be folded into an official update if it comes to that, because it is technically a different inventory. But I think, you know, what's exciting about this project is that, you know, this doesn't normally happen, these updates. A lot of counties and cities, they have their one update, and they kind of roll with it forever and don't ever update it. So this is intended, we're treating it kind of as a pilot project. So hopefully, this will be successful and get support from the public, and then perhaps we'd find either funding or other ways to pursue additional inventories. And I think the migration corridor would be right up there. But I think it's definitely worth asking them just anecdotally what they've experienced with respect to that, for sure.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, I'd agree. I mean, just like this last map showing, you know, what our current elk overlay looks like, the very small area, and then seeing that, you know, for huge chunks of it, there's basically no elk activity now, or no observed elk activity now. It's troubling. And there's, yeah, I'm sure there's all sorts of, there's a very multi-layered story to be told about, you know, for example, you know, why elk aren't using the area south of Bend very much, this area between Bend and Sun River very much anymore, or if they are, why we're not seeing them. But I'm very glad that we're doing this update process.
Thanks, me too. And I will say, on kind of the opposite side of what you're saying, Commissioner Chang, for instance, with the bird nest, there's a lot more. And some of that is actually, from what I've been told, purely just that data collection has gotten a lot better. They're just better at finding those nests and figuring out where they are. So it doesn't necessarily always mean that there's, you know, a tenfold increase in these nests. It might just mean that their observation skills or however they gather that data is better, which I find very interesting. And I think they can, they'll be able to drill down on that in some of our public outreach.
Yeah, yeah, no, but for the elk in particular, I do know that that area south of Bend, what used to be a very elk-rich area, and that there are, there's not very much activity anymore. So...
Yeah.
Yeah. It'll be fun to talk to a wildlife biologist about what's going on.
And then the other side of it is that Lower Bridge, the wolves have been spotted and documented. So apparently, there's a pack at Mount Jefferson, and they travel up like, what is it, 30 miles a day possibly? So anyway, I know the wolves in eastern Oregon really impacted the elk there, and they were pushing them out into the wheat fields, which was not their normal diet. So, yes.
So question kind of at the high level here. So this is a published report now from Mason Bruce and Gerard in its final format or draft format?
Their report, I believe, is, yeah, it's a final format. It will also be folded into, once we're done with this whole outreach, into kind of the county's final big report. That'll be an appendix to that report.
Yeah, so this is...
Similar to what was done in Wildfire, yeah.
A stable piece of it, that's kind of what I was getting.
Exactly.
And then there's community outreach going to happen. So digesting it, sharing information about what it is, how we got here, what assumptions can be made from it. Are the numbers going up or down? Is there anything we can point to that's affected? Is these species positively or negatively? You know, I'm thinking, what have we, and then the goal is going to be, any land use decisions in the future, the comprehensive plan about what we might, it'll just be a good reference point, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, this is not yet a decision point for the Board, but eventually, once we kind of collect all the public outreach, combine that with the consultant data, and we'll provide the Board with options on what it actually means to do an inventory update in terms of, you know, it's statewide, statewide planning goals specify, it's a very specific process. You know, we could choose, the Board could choose to bite off a little bit of it, or a lot of it, or, you know, we'll provide that information, and that will be a decision point later in the process. So...
Well, the elk have been around my house and my property and my neighborhood all winter, so just confirming. They're out there, I've seen them.
I know that Scotty moved her ranch up to Culver because in Le Pine, it was, they were going through her horse operation constantly.
Yeah, well, I always wonder, is it the same group when we see, you know, once in a while, we see them come and go and stuff, and I always wonder if it's the same group or not, or how much they move around.
I know, they need to have bells or something, don't they?
Well, color code the herd, so if it's the same herd, I know which herd it is or not.
Yes, you need to name them.
You can have the neon...
Name tags?
Well, yeah, I just don't know if they're the same elk or not ever, you know.
There's a herd of deer right by my house. It says no hunting on the fence, and those deer can read, and that's where they are. Like, it's their favorite pasture, it's alfalfa, and they love it. So, yes.
Okay, yeah, and we, there is, there is, in the last couple of years, a wolf pack has set up in the headwaters of the Umpqua River Basin. So, I mean, that's basically like southwest corner of Deschutes County. So I would, you know, I would expect that, when I've spoken to various wildlife biologists, they constantly are scratching their head about, well, you know, we got a wolf pack up there in like the south end of the Worm Springs Reservation, we got a wolf pack up in the, you know, the headwaters of the Umpqua River, you know, it's sort of just a, it's a puzzling thing why there aren't any in Deschutes County yet.
No, there are.
I mean, they...
No, they've seen them, they've spotted them in Lower Bridge.
But they, there's sightings, but we don't have an established pack.
Well, one went by my house about a month and a half ago, because one of my horses was completely distraught, and she's not, I've had her, you know, since she was a baby, and she's 14, and she was like, oh my, and I knew something had really bothered her.
Interesting, yeah.
Yeah, because it's not that far from Lower Bridge to my house, so they surely could be...
We're one of the counties that does not yet have a wildlife depredation, or, sorry, livestock depredation committee, which is basically, you know, a local body that kind of helps us tap into compensation. Basically, so if there's livestock owners who suffer losses, they can tap into a state and federal compensation for the loss of livestock to wolves. If you have one of these committees in place, and, you know, you can have someone come out and check out the scene and verify that this was a wolf kill, or, you know, that there were wolf impacts. So if there is, I mean, if either of you are hearing from people, you know, that they have real fears that they're going to suffer livestock losses, it might be, it might be worth our while to think about setting up one of those committees. I, you know, I was actually asking Nick about it, you know, maybe a month ago. And, you know, if we don't, if we're not hearing from people that there's potential impacts, then I don't know if we need to worry about it. But when there are losses, it's good to have the committee in place already, so...
I'll talk to some of my neighbors.
Yeah. Where there's elk, yeah. Well, yeah, we'll know if there's activity, there'll be coverage. And yeah, it'll come on quick possibly if that's really happening, yeah. Okay, Tanya, thank you very much for that. And now we're going to move to the next item that you're representing today. Item number seven, preparation for a public hearing on Marijuana Housekeeping Text Amendments.
Beautiful. I'll just add one quick thing, is that we also plan to do kind of a press release and put it all over the website in terms of the public outreach for the wildlife. I forgot to mention that earlier, but we will sound the horns. So anyway, here I am for item number two. This is in preparation for a public hearing, which is scheduled for March 31st, that's a week from Wednesday, concerning the Marijuana Housekeeping Text Amendments. These are essentially meant to reflect the changes that were resulting in the opt-out vote. In other words, the Measure 9-134. Technically, that was a no vote on that. It's a little confusing, but the no vote ultimately voted no to repealing the temporary first wave of opt-out ordinances. So most of these code changes are meant to kind of clarify that, put it in the code, because right now, it's not in the code, it's simply just the results of the election. And then we also have a couple other little housekeeping changes relating to other marijuana-related developments. marijuana-related developments in the last, uh, I would say, year or so. And then a couple things like typos and numbering, um, numbering things that we just wanted to clean up. So I'll provide a, a brief summary of those. Um, and please feel free to ask any questions. In your packet, I provided a, a draft ordinance with all the exhibits, which are the proposed, um, text amendment chapters, as well as draft findings. So the first proposal, the first chunk, um, is simply removing marijuana production and processing, which those are the ones affected by the opt-out. Um, removing marijuana production and processing as permitted or conditional uses in, in the zones where they appeared before, just simply taking that out. Um, that's an exclusive, primarily exclusive farm use and multiple use agricultural, but a couple of other, uh, districts as well. That was a, a pretty straightforward change. The second change, um, is essentially acknowledging and clarifying that those, uh, production and processing businesses that were existing already, um, prior to the opt-out, um, they remain, they, they're allowed to continue to exist. And we're putting them into kind of two different categories. Um, the first is for those who have initiated the use. Um, in most cases, this means those who've received their OLCC licenses. Um, there's a few, a few, um, cases there where they haven't yet received their licenses, but they've demonstrated that they've essentially made a good faith effort to, towards, towards initiating the use. As we know, there's a, there's a bit of a lag time between, um, uh, a lot of applicants receiving their, their permit from the county and then they're waiting in that queue that we've discussed, um, at length before for their OLCC license. So those who have already initiated that, initiated that use, they will now be considered a non-conforming use. So that's how they're, that's their new kind of box that they're in. Um, and the, the code for non-conforming uses provides criteria if, in case they want to make an alteration to their property. This is something we've been asked about before. So just in sum, those who have initiated the use will become a non-conforming use. And then the other side of that coin is those who have not yet initiated the use. So essentially those who are in that, that waiting list for OLCC, um, they haven't initiated the use, so it can't yet be a non-conforming use. So therefore, we're categorizing them as a modification of approval. If you want to, um, change that permit, say you wanna move a building from, you know, the east side to the west side, that's a modification of approval. And that's a land use process that goes through our current planning, uh, department. So that's how they get split up. Um, then, um, the next chunk of amendments are essentially clarifications, um, and these are stemming from discussions we've been having, um, our legal department, Adam Smith, um, with OLCC, as we've discussed, um, at length before with the board. So these are not essentially changes to how we treat things, but just clarifications in the code to, um, clarify essentially. Um, the proposal, the proposed text amendments clarify that a change in ownership of a land use permit issued, it doesn't require either a modification of, of approval or an alteration of a non-conforming use. And this basically stems from the fact that in the county, and again, we've, we've mentioned this before, but in the county, the land use permit travels with the land. So essentially, if my name's at the top of it, or if your name is at the top of it, it still is associated with that address. Um, so that clarifies that the change in ownership doesn't trigger any sort of change. Um, and that's meant to clarify, um, primarily for OLCC, but also to, you know, uh, the laypeople or, or users of the code. Um, and related to that, a change in location for a land use permit issued for production or processing is prohibited. And again, that, that, uh, kind of folds up into the concept of the land use, uh, the permit traveling with the land. Um, if you're changing the location, you're no longer at the address that it was permitted for initially. So that's, that's not allowed. And that's kind of always the way it's been. So we've added language into the code to, um, to clarify that. And Adam, I see you're here. Feel free to jump in if there's, um, kind of legal nuances that I'm not capturing. And then lastly, um, the, this is not relating to the opt-out, but this is just a little bit of housekeeping. Um, the proposed text amendments remove youth activity center separation distance, um, from the marijuana, uh, code. Uh, this isn't, you know, the code will not be really, uh, applicable to new production and processing, but it was meant to clarify. Um, this is resulting from the Court of Appeals decision on wave seer. Youth activity was, um, determined to be too general or too, it, it wasn't reasonable in terms of, um, you know, providing a predictable, uh, way to apply. So we've struck it, stricken it, excuse me, from, from the code, just to keep it, um, clear, based on that decision. Those are the amendments. That's a brief summary of that. Um, does anyone, does any board members have any questions on those before I continue?
Sounds like a good package, uh, kind of the, the package following a citizen's election on the process. Uh, I was just thinking that, uh, you know, I got to see the whole evolution of the terminology, youth activity center, because, uh, you know, I was at the table when we said, oh, well, let's make sure, you know, if there's a, a defined, you know, youth, like we use the term youth activity center, but you know, the vision was a boys' and girls' club or, you know, some, some service, that there would be a distance. Uh, and then that sure became a litigated matter for many, many years. So it's kind of a shame. But on the other hand, it, it did what it, it was there for, uh, on one hand, too. It really, you know, thought about the impacts that were, were the, just the perceived conflicts in the rural county or, you know, actual, from whichever point of view you are. So just interesting seeing it go away now.
Been quite a journey.
Yeah.
I will say, um, if there are no further questions, I'll just continue briefly with a couple other points. Um, this was brought before the.
Question here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did, I did want to ask about, um, so, uh, along the, along the way during our marijuana discussions, there was, there were, um, inquiries, requests made about, um, modifying hours of operation, um, modifying the inspection regime for existing.
Yes.
And, and I, I'm, um, I, I know that we are, I know that we have plans to address those, those considerations, but I was just trying to figure out whether those are, you know, whether that's kind of like a, a separate strand from what we're talking about, or whether the, the things will come together for, you know, when we have our public hearing, will there be any discussion of those items? Or will the public hearing really just focus on these text amendments in, in this, in this package that we're looking at? You know, that's, you know, here in front of us right now.
That's a great question, and I, I, I'm glad you brought it up. Uh, those will be separate. Short answer is they are separate. Basically, the purpose of this kind of chunk of amendments is to address the opt-out with specifically processing and production, as well as the youth activity, which also had to do with production. Um, the next wave, which I think will probably be in the next couple of months, and we have our newest planner working on those right now. Um, since those came from, from requests from Deschutes County residents and applicants, those are, we've kind of put that in a separate bucket, um, especially one has to do with retail, the hours. So that's kind of a, just a, its own island, its own separate thing. So we're treating that separately. Um, as well as the, the request about annual reporting, modifying that, um, that's gonna be separate because those are, um, kind of, they bubbled up from a different source essentially. So, um, so they're gonna be a separate process, but forthcoming pretty, pretty soon.
Great, thank you.
I don't know if Nick, you have anything else to add?
Thanks, Tanya. Yeah, I, I just pulled up our, our calendar here, and I think we're gonna be, we're gonna begin to discuss those, um, with the planning commission as early as April 8th. So they are coming up here in short order. I'll meet with Brandon, uh, our new planner here in short order and, and confirm the dates. But, uh, yes, thank you, Commissioner Chang. They're coming up very soon.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank the planning commission for being involved in reviewing these also. I mean, that's, this is the process. We're getting to see it here. Uh, you know, that's another diverse group of people from around the county looking at this package before we even get it. So a special thanks to the planning commission.
Thanks. That's actually a great segue to.
Oh, yeah. What's next? Okay.
That we took it in front of the planning commission. So that's, that's perfect. Um, we did not have a hearing with the planning commission. It's not necessarily required in all, in this case, and because these are relatively straightforward, um, we just wanted to have them review it. Um, they provided some good edits on just some typos that we missed, which gives me great satisfaction. Um, but they had no significant concerns or changes or anything like that. So, um, we thank them for the review, um, as you noted. Um, and lastly, I just have a question for the board. Um, if the board would like to consider adoption by emergency for this, um, and if so, um, I'm not sure if that's something that's immediate or 30 days or, or any other kind of option about that. Um, or, you know, the traditional non-emergency would be 90 days. So that's, um, I'll write up the appropriate ordinance depending on the board direction for the public hearing next week.
So I saw that in here, anticipates adoption by emergency, but I, uh, but just as one person, I don't know that, I mean, I, I wouldn't go down that path unless there was a reason. I guess I'm kind of lost for the reason. 90 days, you know, it's, I don't know that, what application's gonna be affected, or, or what, what opportunity is open that's gonna be affected.
I think the staff's interpretation was, and, uh, legal might have more thoughts on this, was just that it's, because it's reflecting mostly the election that already happened recently, just time was of the essence in that, in that consideration. Um, Adam, Adam just popped up. Maybe he has more thoughts on that.
Yeah. Hi, Commissioners, Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel. Uh, it's, of course, the Commissioners' call. Our thought was to just, uh, you know, have a belt and suspenders approach for the, uh, community as a whole. Um, an argument can be made that anybody can submit a land use application for a new marijuana business at this time, uh, and proceed through the entire land use permitting process, only to then, uh, be denied a license from OLCC. Uh, and so we're, we're trying to ensure that nobody wastes resources on, uh, what likely be a fruitless endeavor by, uh, getting this code amendments in place as soon as possible. And then secondarily, as Tanya mentioned, there are some, uh, very, I would say, crystal clear language that we're adding to the code, uh, to provide, uh, um, clarity for the existing marijuana businesses and also OLCC on how those businesses are supposed to be treated going forward. Uh, I'm aware of at least four businesses in Deschutes County that are looking to purchase, uh, existing marijuana production facilities. Uh, and so there's at least four of those businesses that, uh, are hoping for certainty sooner rather than later. Of course, it's the board's, uh, uh, board's discretion if they want to adopt it by, uh, uh, emergency, wait the entire 90 days or any period in between.
Adam, Adam, those potential purchases, are those, um, entities considering purchasing active existing operations, or some of this category where, um, of, um, licenses that have been approved, but, uh, or permits that have been approved, but where, you know, production is not happening yet?
Uh, I've spoken to attorneys representing the buyers of two of those cases, and I believe in both instances, they would be purchasing businesses that have been permitted, licensed, and are, uh, operating. Uh, I played phone tag with, uh, an attorney representing the third business, so I don't know if it's, uh, up and operating, or if they're just per, or purchasing the, uh, land use permits and the license. And, uh, I have no information at this time on the fourth. I just found out about the fourth, uh, literally a few minutes ago.
Okay, thanks.
Well, any thoughts about emergency order or not?
Well, it has been over four months, so I can see why, um, it's suggested if we voted, if we all voted for it.
Yeah, I can, I, I definitely see the value of making the rules clear for everybody. Um, you know, so that people aren't trying to apply for things that, you know, have no chance of, of going anywhere, so that people who are trying to figure out how to operate their business, you know, moving forward, you know, know what the rules are. Um, I, I don't have a good sense of if we go the emergency adoption path, like, is that, uh, does that take, you know, three times as much staff time, or, you know, are there, are there costs, uh, associated with that, 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 you know?
Just adding a few words to the ordinance.
Okay.
Right? I mean, I, I mean, emergency clause in a land use matter is all perception and it's all history. Back in the day before Luba existed and you had a 21-day appeal window, that the 90 days had some relevance. But the fact of the matter is, if anyone wants to challenge this, they'd have to challenge it, um, through the appropriate processes, either a writ of review in circuit court or through Luba, depending upon where the jurisdiction lay. And as a result, the 90 days is somewhat archaic. But commissions are reluctant to do that because the minute you start approving things by ordinance, that gets people's attention. And they see black helicopters and things like that when you do things by emergency. So a concern kind of comes about that, well, emergency means something, but in this context, with the appeal periods already being limited uh, through other processes, it really doesn't fit for land use as well as it does general county ordinances. And so the statute, the ORS that dates back decades and decades, predated Luba. So matters that filter to Luba have a much shorter appeal window anyway. Um, so it's, 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 it's got a lot of that working. It's not an easy answer. And it does require unanimity by the board to pass by emergency. So either 2-0 or 3-0, depending upon how many of you are here. And then, uh, yeah, these are housekeeping text amendments. We're keeping, you know, just organizing it to make it the, the best set of code it can be by emergency. You know, it's like, is that even the right, the statement? So that's all. It's a good discussion to have though each time because emergency.
Yeah.
Yeah. Instead of having this window of, well, we're gonna do something, it really matters, and it's gonna go into effect 90 days from now, we're gonna do something that really matters and it needs to be done now. So just getting the words around why it's an emergency. And, yeah, I mean, Dave, thank you very much for kind of putting perspective around it, that it's, it's almost semantics, but it is land use and, you know, because, uh, you know, the, if we do it by emergency, uh, to be effective immediately, uh, you know, there are situations where the media could be picking up on it that day, so it's published the next day, and then somebody finds out, hey, wait a minute, that mattered to me. You know, so it's just, just something.
Right.
Right.
And, um, yeah, can I just, can I check on our process? So if we have a public hearing on the 31st, um, that'll be, is that essentially the, the, the final opportunity for, for anyone who wants to weigh in on these text amendments to, to come in the door? Or, um, is there, you know, you know, a, a period to receive written comments, or, uh, you know, how, you know, how does this process exactly work?
This is a legislative matter, so it's open up to anybody in any time. Uh, somebody could come to us directly or call us and communicate about it also. Um, public hearing will be putting it on the record in a public meeting, uh, but we could bring in any feedback from anybody also. So just by bringing it to this meeting today and having it in the planning commission means there have been opportunities for people that are interested in the subject to hear about it, see it. It's been printed in the, in the, in the, uh, packet. So.
Right.
It's kind of out there already, too.
Yeah.
I don't know if that answers. I was just.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I, anyone who's concerned about this, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to go through in my head, is there any chance that they were hiding under a rock and they, they've missed that this is all happening?
After, right after.
But, um, I, it, it sure seems like it's, it's been, you know, in the public eye and been, been fairly visible. So.
Well, this is the proposed package. Uh, I guess if, do we want to get more clear about emergency? Uh, is there support by both of you? So emergency to be.
Yes. If we have a 2-0 vote or a 3-0 vote, then it can be declared by emergency, correct? It has to be unanimous.
Yeah, unanimous, yeah.
So, sure, we all, do we have to vote on emergency right now?
Nope, but we're putting direction to it, just making sure.
Sure.
Is there any?
I can provide versions, you know, both versions to bring to the hearing if that's.
Well, it sounds like we can get there today. I'm not opposed to it. I'm just making sure we're having a discussion about it, you know, this is it. So, I mean, we can get to emergency to be implemented or to be effective immediately would be that what we would do. Uh, so that can be the default starting point. And then if something else changes, we'll back off from that. How's that sound? Because, yeah, we're not voting today, but it's just given direction to it.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, good. So we'll start off, just like it's been mentioned, as a emergency order, proposed emergency order, and then if it changes, it'll change. So.
That's great. And if I may add, just for, for, I, I don't know, um, we have not yet received any public comments, um, either written or verbal, just if that helps the commissioners make their decisions. Um, and notice was published in the bulletin, I believe, on Sunday. So it is, it is out there on, in some capacity, for sure.
It may be coming. Okay.
Don't forget it's March Madness, and the beavers and the ducks are both playing, Tanya. This is really.
Yeah, so maybe people aren't paying attention.
People are a bit distracted, uh, for the first time in ever.
Sorry, I don't speak sports.
You don't? Oh, my gosh. Well, it's a really big deal. And, uh, yes.
College basketball.
It's the first time ever, the men and women of all.
All four.
Schools. So this is very, um, special. I know it's sports.
Okay, Tanya, anything else?
No, thank you so much. And I, um, I'll prepare that ordinance for emergency, and we can always go a different direction if we'd be on the, on the hearing date. So thank you very much for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So at this time, other items, I see Scott. So at this time, other items, I see Scott Langton has joined us. We had talked about legislative matters, and bringing something back here today. He has offered to join us. So this, you know, having Scott in the room, let's dive right into this issue, or just a discussion. So I think it's Senate Bill one five four, is that the number, or just pulling it out of my memory here?
Correct.
Yeah, so Senate Bill one fifty-four, little bit of history, or let's all kind of learn together. I think Deschutes County is, has not taken a position on this yet, but I guess it was a request from Senator Finley.
It was.
He asked us, you know, kind of through an email, asking Commissioners, is there any feedback on the negotiation of a, what, thirty-five hundred to seven thousand, or fifty-five hundred to seven thousand dollar window of these tax, Scott, you could, you could take it from there, help us with the terminology. It's got something to do with taxes.
All right. For the record, Scott Langton County Assessor, and I should have wore my Beaver colors today, so I'm right there with you.
Thank you, Scott. I'm glad you're here.
And also, I, this is amazing, this is the first time in a year I've actually had a face-to-face meeting, I had to come downstairs.
Welcome, welcome in person, yes.
All right. Yeah, and I did a brief handout here, I'll give you guys, hopefully helps illustrate.
Thanks, Scott.
I just didn't want the two teams to play each other, you know, on the stage.
Early, yeah, maybe later.
I was like, oh, please, not yet.
Yeah, well, the Beavers are going to win, so.
Well, you can dream all you want, it's very important, dreaming.
So this gives you a little brief history. The top square is some information I prepared for the Board of Commissioners several years ago, and when they were looking at adopting the first one. So currently, we have two properties under the pilot program, payment in lieu of tax, and we have one property that, that, they'd already built, and then they came before the Commissioner and asked for that, and the Commission denied them. So those are the three that we have out there right now. The second bracket down is now actually, the, the first is, we had the Department of Revenue do a pro forma, because Department of Revenue, who is the one that values utility properties, and this is considered a centrally assessed utility on a solar electric. And then we have the actual property that's under, so you can see there's slight differences, where the pro forma was under ten megawatt, they actually built to nine point nine. The valuation on the pro forma started out at thirteen million, when they actually valued it, it came in at sixteen six. So you can see some differences there. The first column is payment in lieu of, that's, that's statutory set currently at seven thousand a megawatt. The next column over, that's the R E D D, is we have a rural energy development zone that is overseen by EDCO as well. Nobody's utilized that of date, but it makes it so a property is eligible for a three-year exemption. So since that is already in place, I ran that scenario. And then, the way the language works, too, is partway through, if they decide to, because solar projects are quickly depreciating assets, at some point, the line intersects between the payment in lieu of, and what the abhorrent tax would be. There's a one-year penalty on that, so you can see that at the bottom. So, in the pro forma, you saw that they were actually going to pay a little more under the pilot. Now, with the updated information, and there's still a lot of exception, assumptions made into this, since we are forecasting out a number of years, tax rate remains the same, is the depreciation accurate from, based on the pro forma? But now you can see where the pilot would actually pay a little less, based on this scenario. So of course, if you change the legislation to fifty-five hundred, then that would impact this as well. But my understanding is, and it's all under proposed amendments right now, that it's negotiable at the county level, as far as that.
So the, so the proposed legislation is for the pilot program itself, correct?
Correct.
And right now, it's just a flat fee, flat number, seven thousand dollars per megawatt?
Correct.
No negotiation. So then that is the discussion at the state legislature, is if we would allow the counties to have negotiating power, do we support it or not as a county, Deschutes County, because, and that was what the Senator was asking. And I think from our discussion on the call on Friday morning, it's pretty obvious that, all of a sudden, two counties next to each other, with, you know, comparable land, or landscape, or elevation, or sun exposure, we could end up negotiating against a county commission for a job, you know, isn't it, well, we'll offer you sixty-five, we'll offer you sixty-six thousand. So that was the reality of the discussion on Friday, is like, oh, it's kind of a race to the bottom if we find that happening.
Yeah. Well, there's several other pieces in the bill as well, but that's the one you guys.
Yeah.
Because there's some cleanup language on how the taxes are distributed, there's some other changes in here as well. You know, I'm not an expert on solar, but at least in talking with others in the industry, the tax incentive and leveling the, the payment seems to help, in my understanding, in the, the way they finance. And it helps them to have that known. It appears that the siding of these properties is more in line with where, they don't do the big inner ties like you see out toward brothers, they don't do the smaller lines, it's that magical distance between that kind of middle, and I don't know the technical term of whatever.
Electricity substation locations?
Yeah, and so it's more location-based than just about anything else. But then for financing, at least that's what I've heard it is, that that's the reason they wanted that stability and predictability on the taxation.
Well, and it looks like that seven thousand dollar number was set to generally be in the same exact ballpark as the assessed value. You can see, just like, thank you for running these numbers, it's kind of the right number. You know, if the one point three are the other opportunities there, one point four for the rural energy zone.
It should be pointed out on that, though, that's running, and this is a project just out of Bear Creek a little bit, just on the edge of town. The effective tax rate is a bigger driving factor on that. So if you look at, like, a rural Lake County, they might only have a nine-dollar tax rate. That scenario is going to be much different than if it's at a tax rate they get sixteen dollars, where our effective tax rate on this scenario is, I've got it on here someplace, effective tax rate is about thirteen dollars a thousand. So that will vary county by county as well, and as far as whether it's favorable to do abhorrent tax, or the Pilt, or whatever. There's a lot of moving parts here. We vote in something new, all of a sudden, this scenario looks much different.
Yep, yeah, okay. So seven just happens to look, kind of work for, it's in the right ballpark for Deschutes County, with it or without it.
At this location, in Deschutes County.
At that location, okay.
Yes.
How much of the assessed value is land value, and how much is, is the hardware?
Well, that's what's interesting with this legislation, this also cleans up. It doesn't define, but it calls out for the Commissioners to make that determination. Right now, the way the, the law is written, and I don't, you have to believe it was unintended, people just hadn't thought about it, that if you're on leased land, then this only includes a solar project itself, and the land is taxed separately. If the solar project owns the land, and then the agreement doesn't spell it out, which in many cases it doesn't, it sounds like statewide, then the land's included in the seven thousand. So there's a huge inconsistency as far as that. So this legislation helps clean that up, so it's intentional at the time of the agreement, if the land's included or not.
Interesting. But that still doesn't give us real good clarity about a legislative position, I, I don't think, you know, as in, why would we get into this one and take a strong position? Any thoughts?
I mean, one other, one other thing we need to, I, I think is important for us to consider, is that land is more scarce in Deschutes County than it is in some of the other eastern Oregon counties. And so if, I, I mean, I, I do remember, I, I feel like I remembered listening to a Board of County Commissioners meeting, where there was concerns expressed about, well, we're not, we're not allowed to build on this land, which we're not, but, you know, if, if you can build a, if you can build solar on, on this land, then, you know, you know, that there's still development happening. I mean, and, you know, during that previous board discussion, it seemed like there was frustration that, you know, we can't build on this land, build houses on this land, but we can build solar on it. While, you look at, you look at some counties in, in, you know, like Carney County, they got a lot of land that you can build stuff on, and people don't, you know, people aren't frustrated, like, like a greenfield solar development, it's, it's, it's space intensive, right? And, and in a, in a community where land is precious, is more precious, you know, like, available private land is more precious than, you know, is, is a greenfield solar farm even, like, do we want to, do we want to, you know, really, really encourage it, and cut our, you know, and cut our rates to, to be able to have that, you know, from a, you know, like a land scarcity perspective? I'm, I'm not sure if I'm making any sense.
Well, same conclusion, though, there's not, there's not a strong position of Deschutes County.
Right, right.
I think we have a different situation.
Yeah.
What we're talking about is the twenty percent of, of land that we have that's not state or federal. It, we really, you know, and people move here because it's beautiful.
Right. I mean, it is, it is, it's precious, right?
Yes, precious is a very good word. Yes, I use that a lot, so definitely.
I mean, that said, you know, the people who are very passionate about renewable energy, and, you know, I, I, I'm excited about renewable energy, you know, might also say, well, if we care about promoting renewable energy, then, you know, giving people, you know, giving solar developers, you know, some, some tax or, or fee relief is a good way to stimulate, you know, kind of shifting our energy portfolio towards, you know, non-carbon intensive, you know, sources. But, you know, I, so there's all these different layers of consideration, but I, I mean, I, I just keep coming back to the, to the, to the consideration that if we, if we provide a range, then it, I, I really do think there's going to be a race to the bottom. And, you know, I, I don't know if I want to encourage that. I, you know, in some ways, I, I think the ideal would be to, you know, have a fixed seven thousand dollar rate, and then some of our, some of our neighboring counties that are hungrier for economic development, and, and have more land to spare, they get a better deal, rather than, you know, having, you know, because, because, you know, if, if the, if the range is set from fifty-five hundred to seven thousand, I'm sure that there's going to be a lot of, you know, big energy developers out there who drive it down to fifty-five hundred, so.
I'll be on the call in the morning, Legislative Eastern Oregon Caucus call with Senator Finley, and I'll mention from Deschutes County's point of view, it's not a, probably not the same issue as other counties. So we're either no comment, or we're not supportive, knowing that the number is going to go to the lower, assuming the number's going to go to the lower number, no matter what. There'll be pressure to put it to the lower number, so.
Good. I'd rather see, I'd rather see solar on every big box store in town.
Nuclear power. Thank you very much for the discussion, great spreadsheet, and where that puts it in perspective. You know, this is for that project, at that location in this county, but the numbers could be different in other places, so now we have, we know more information.
Well, you're welcome, glad that helped, and go Beavs.
Go Beavers.
Can I say go Ducks?
Yeah.
Well, and go Ducks to a point.
Good, thank you.
We'll discuss this later.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, so other items, anything to be brought today? Oh, and I do have, so as I said, I didn't bring a binder down, we had six applicants for a local public safety coordinating council, community member seat. And I do have, you know, the resumes, I was able to do three interviews one day, three interviews another day. Ken Hales joined me, our community justice director, so it's the two of us interviewing these members of the community, six great applicants. And we would bring forward Donna Mills from the Central Oregon Health Council Director, to join the committee of the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council. So that's the recommendation from the efforts of those six interviews. And then, as I say, for us as a group, either accepting that recommendation, or wanting to do more review is, would be the next step.
There's only one slot?
Yeah, so it's one community member position, yep. And this is a process started about a month or five weeks ago.
Well, I don't, I don't know who else was in your pool, but Donna Mills is, is great, so.
As I say, yeah, a couple other great applicants, I didn't bring the binder down, but we do have a nice binder with all the applicant information, if you want to take a look at it also.
Okay, well, do you want to just give us a copy or something?
Yep, that's fine, I'll, I'll put the binder in your box, so you can look at the other ones, and you'll understand who the recommendation was, and then we'll go from there. Okay, there we go. Other items?
I would like to bring that letter back on Wednesday, if you don't mind.
Which letter is that?
The letter about challenging the COVID responsibilities, if we could do that on Wednesday.
So that was Eastern Oregon Counties, it was sent out, seeing if people wanted to sign on, either as counties or individuals. We have not, I haven't responded to it, and it sounds like you haven't either.
Well, it was due on Thursday, we wanted your name by noon, but...
So then it would be a discussion of the Board of Commissioners of Deschutes County wanting to make a request or a statement. Have you seen that letter?
That was the one that came from Paul Anders?
Yeah.
I, I thought he was asking for individual sign-ons.
He said we could sign individually, or we, we were thinking maybe we would send our own letter. And so that's why I'd like to bring it back on Wednesday.
But I didn't respond to it, I just didn't get on top of it, for the timeframe he was asking for. So that would, yeah, that's fine. So let's bring it back Wednesday, we'll look at the substantive sentences in it, and see if there's support or not.
Well, the good news is, today we have six positives cases, and five in the hospital, zero in ICU. So we're definitely, Mondays seem to be a good number.
We'll see what happens after spring break. Hopefully nobody, hopefully nobody from Deschutes County is in, in Miami, Florida, right now.
Well, and I'm not, I mean, yeah, maybe the ones that are getting, kind of pushing the envelope are not here, because I'm not really seeing it in the community. I don't see anybody stretching or pushing back, you know, masks are worn, people are pretty calm, cool, and collected right now, so.
Right, right, but I mean, it's...
But maybe they've gone other places to get rowdy, yeah.
And, I, you know, maybe there's a whole lot of people coming here to, to do spring break in, in, you know, in Deschutes County, and, I mean, they, yeah.
Okay, understood, yeah.
I guess, I guess I would just say that, you know, just to kind of give you a sense of what my position will be on that, on that letter, I am not interested in signing on to that letter, or, or, or something that's very similar to it. So, I mean, I, so if, if Paul was asking for whether people wanted to sign on individually, I think, you know, that's great for you all to, to, to consider, if you want to do that. But, you know, you can, you can, you, you may be able to get a majority on a letter amongst the three of us, but I'm not interested in, in signing on to a letter like that.
Okay, well, that's, good discussion already on the topic, so, okay. Anything else?
Just real quick, Commissioners, recently in the, in the green F Y I folder that was circulated, there was a letter from B L M and Jeff Kitchens regarding some fuel reduction work up near Crooked River Ranch and Steelhead Falls. And two of you kind of penned a little note on there that you'd like a letter of support for that. So I asked Ed Keith to do that, he's done it, I have a draft, I'll put it in your inboxes, and we can talk about that on Wednesday.
Tom, that's really, that project is really close to the county border, I mean, is that within our county, or is that in Jefferson County?
It may not be, it, but it's real close, so obviously it affects us, even if it's not precisely in our, in our county. It may not be, it, but it's real close, so obviously it affects us, even if it's not precisely in our, in our county.
Because that's that whole area down there, it does not have fire protection on Mackenzie Canyon.
Yeah, and that, there was federal legislation on that, you've seen in the past, I'm sure you track that. And it, you know, the county line actually bisects Crooked River Ranch, so the northern, probably 10%, 15% of Crooked River Ranch, or the nor, the southern, rather, portion is in Deschutes County, the other half is predominantly in Jefferson County. But that, there's a Sage and Juniper Strip, you know, in between the edge of the subdivision to the edge of the canyon and down the canyon.
Yeah.
Which, you know, doesn't pay attention to county border, so I think all of that is, it may or may not be the actual area contemplated for fuel reduction, may or may not extend into Deschutes County. But just, you know, the terrain is pretty consistent all, all through there north-south.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I tracked and worked on for a number of years the second egress out of Crooked River Ranch. And you can bet that if you get a big, if you get a big fire going in the Jefferson County portion of Crooked River Ranch, all those people will be trying to go through the Deschutes County portion of Crooked River Ranch to get out. So, yeah, the, the, yeah, our, our, the counties are tied together in Crooked River Ranch.
Okay, great. Anything else?
I don't think so.
So we do have a couple executive sessions today to finish the day, I will kind of formalize it now. So there'll be executive session on ORS 1926602E, real property negotiations, 2H litigation, 2D labor negoti-